Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 2nd board meeting. We have adjourned from executive session. We did end up having an executive session. And now we are joining you here in the LGI. We're going to move to a 1.2 and we have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. To the republic which stands for our nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We are all present, every single board member, student board member. And thank you all for being here today. And we have the opportunity for the good of the order. Does anyone have anything to share? I would just like to share that we will be having a forum and this should be hitting mailboxes sometime next week or so. There will be a forum for the community to discuss tax exemptions and other budgetary matters. Save the date, October 19th, 6:30 in the PAC, the Lydah Tobler Performing Arts Center. It's going to be awesome. With that, we move to the opportunity for the public to be heard. We provide that opportunity to any students should they want to go first. And it does not appear that we have any students with us for us to mention to and embarrass. But if there's any member of the public that would like to address the board or be heard, now is the opportunity. There's a little bit of instruction to acknowledge that this is just an opportunity to be heard, it's not a community session because that is not the opportunity. All right, if no one would like to come board, we will begin the next section with the student board member report. Paige Lynam, welcome.
Okay, so I have a few things. The PTA Color Run was September 18th. And it was really a great way to bring the community together and we also acknowledged the cultural significance of Wonders tradition. Also, Open House was last week. Families had the opportunity to visit school and meet the teachers and ask any questions they have. And I know that I really like the event because it helps keep my parents connected to what I'm doing all day and just like encourages conversation. And then also we had Homecoming this weekend. So throughout the week, we had Spirit Week and we dressed up. And then we had a pep rally on Friday and everyone was really excited. And for the first time, the soccer games were Saturday and the dance was Friday, so it was a little different this year. But everybody had a great time. And then we also had a football game and a volleyball tournament Saturday. So it was a really good weekend.
It's amazing. A lot of people put a lot of effort into that, a really spectacular event, I understand. All right, um, thank you Paige for sharing that from a Janet perspective. Open House was always fantastic and I appreciate all the efforts of teachers and all the different groups that show up for it.
So first foremost, I'd actually like to piggyback on what Rachel said. I'd like to thank all the community members, businesses, booster clubs, including the Soccer Booster Club, custodial maintenance staff, administration, students, and everybody who was involved in Homecoming. It was an unbelievable event. You know, I say it all the time that Borriesville is an idyllic, you know, community and there's no place like that. It was shown on Saturday from 8 o'clock to 8 o'clock at night. You know, we had all these events going on, fireworks with the Soccer Booster Club that helped support that, Business for Good and a whole bunch of other businesses that helped support those. Lots going on and it's not thanks to one person, it's thanks to everybody. Also, a special acknowledgement to Shannon Spollin. She's one of English teachers in the high school. Shannon's been selected as a 2023 Collaborator of Excellence by the New York State English Council. The Collaborate, I can't say that word tonight, I apologize. And it's being recorded. The Collaborators of Excellence Award honors those nominated by colleagues who teach, team teach, and extensive literacy component and inspire excellence in students and teachers, and Shannon truly demonstrates this daily. So, yes, we can. And I said that we wanted to do more and I was asked not to, so that's about the message I was allowed to do. I also want to, you know, also state that the PTA Color Run was a kickoff on the 18th. So that's what they did and they're having that. The Color Run is until October. And it will be cold and I have to warn it because my daughter said I have to run it. November, November, my bad, yes, November.
Early November.
So, yes, and I was told by my daughter that I will be running it with her this year. So I was going to talk a little bit about the October 19th, the thing that Rachel said, but I will say it one more time. You all have these tonight. They were actually hot off the presses today. It takes roughly a week for these to get out after they get delivered, then they go to our mailing house and the mailing house sends them out. So it's going, it will hit mailboxes hopefully early next week to our community. But this is the budget newsletter that was out there for everything. On the agenda tonight is the appointment of the interim principal, Mr. Doug Duhl. Joins us from the Warrensburg School District where he spent his career, first as a teacher, then as a director of discipline, athletic director, assistant principal, and a principal for the last 15 years prior to retirement in June. Actually retired in December and then stayed on to finish out the school year there. This will give Doug, you know, Doug will be here and is set to arrive in the district on October 16th. He's set to be here through June 30th. This will give enough time to the district to hold stakeholder meetings and conduct a thorough search process. They have someone set to begin July 1st, although the specifics aren't finalized and we're still working through it, again, only October 2nd. We are looking to begin the process in January with a potential candidate on the agenda in May. So we're looking at that January, March, April, May, maybe, you know, way around that timeframe. And then we're going to be able to get somebody so they have enough time to resign from their position and start here on July 1st. But we are excited to have Doug and he actually does play a men's league baseball that actually is out of Borriesville. So he actually is very familiar with Borriesville and comes here twice a week. So he does have some connections in our community already. So empowering student voices is something that we've been discussing for some time. We have the Bozies Program Empowering Student Voices that we're still having going forward with our DEI Committee. But we also are starting something new and what story is going to be based around that. Last year it started when we were having conversations with some students about what kind of platforms they utilize. And I joke with the kids, I go, "Do you have Facebook?" And they say, "No, that's for old people." You know, and that's true. That's, you know, we utilize Facebook, but mostly that's adults. Kids nowadays are not using that, they're using Instagram. And we are a school for students and the community, so we should have more student voice. The student government this year is working together and they have a public relations person, Ellie Gilio. And we're working out a program where students help develop Instagram posts from a bird's eye view intended. And those Instagram posts will be created by students and then posted up on our Instagram page. The idea is to get more student voice, more student perspective, and then hopefully have that go over a few years. On top of that, Paige is also working on communicating with students to understand what's important to them. She's working on surveys and giving other things and also getting positive answers that they want to focus on. So a couple of different surveys that Paige is trying to do in the school community to be able to get more student voice. So I think, you know, that's a really nice step forward to get the kids to have more responsibility and also showcase their perspective a lot more, so. I'll keep some. Second Step is getting rolled out pretty soon in October. So as you know, and I've said it multiple times, it's an OMH grant that we received from the Office of Mental Health. Then Jeff is going to send out something to his families and it's starting in October. It's K-8. There is an anti-bullying program. So it is embedded, K through 5 is an embedded program. And then 6 through 8 is an add-on anti-bullying program that's involved into it. As part of the OMH grant, we had to have that. Also the social emotional learning for adults. That's going to, you're going to hear me say SEAL everyone's out. I'm going to try not to do acronyms. But if you do hear me say that, it's social emotional learning for adults. We're trying to roll that out and we're waiting to November. And we're going to do like a slow roll-off of that adult one, just give people time to assimilate and kind of move into the school year and slowly roll the adult one out. No, the adult one is for staff. So all of us in the school community should also have our understanding of our emotional well-being. So that's working on our trust, our ability to work together, our collaboration. Because if we as a school community are as strong as adults, then that will show to our students. So that is there and that's also part of the Office of Mental Health Grant. It's three years that we get the modules for. There's four modules doing over a period of three years. So we really do get to spread them out and have enough time to be able to take our time with that. And a lot of it focuses more on restorative practices and goes along with that as well. So I think that will be a positive thing as we start to slowly roll that one out. Second Step though does focus on a few different things. Growth mindset and goal setting. This is focuses on a child learn how to pay attention and manage distractions, develop a growth mindset and apply goal-setting strategies to their social and academic lives. Emotional management. Children learn how to identify and label emotions and use emotion management strategies, including stress management for older students to calm strong feelings. Again, some of us adults could also use that too. So that's why it's there. And the adult language and student language are exactly the same. So it's all that same embedded and understanding all throughout the district. Empathy and kindness. Children learn how to recognize kindness and act kindly. They have empathy for others and taking others' perspectives and recognize kind acts and empathy as important elements of building and maintaining relationships. And then problem solving. Children learn how to identify and state a problem, recognize if a problem is an accident, and use the step problem for solving processes. That's step is say something, say the problem, think of the solutions, explore the outcomes, and pick a solution. And again, that's, it's level K through 8. So, you know, the idea is this year our students are going to be getting it, but each year the foundations will build upon each other. So the kids who get from kindergarten all the way through eighth grade, they'll have a full academic understanding of this work. So we're pretty excited to have that program started.
Right. Yes, can you tell us who the, who administers that program?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Who administers that program?
The teachers are going to be working with the guidance counselors and they're working through it and they're building to develop the process of how that works.
No, but is there an organization that produces all the material?
Second Step is the organization.
That's the name of the organization.
That is the name of the organization. Office of Mental Health has grants that we could purchase that you go into and then you can purchase different programs. Obeyance Anti-Bullying Program, mental, like, um, I forgot the well-being one that there was. And then Second Step was one of the programs. So there's a few other school districts in New York State that have been able to receive that. So they're all in running Second Step. Okay. And I did have one more space. That, no, I got to have it. No, that was it. Second Step was my last one. So I'm done.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
On the principal report, maybe we'll get to this in curriculum. But on Jeff's report, he mentioned that the teachers are using wonders, but they haven't, it didn't seem like there was training yet. I was just, I think it's my own confusion. I felt very, like, the slow rollout with the special.
So they're using small aspects of wonders, so like the one part that we talked about in curriculum. And then more training is coming. So they had the online training and then the next two weeks they're just having more training. So they're rolling out, it's not the full program, but it's bits and pieces of the program and one big concept that we talked about. And then they're going to still get more training as they go along. It's not the assessments, it's not the other component of the whole program itself.
So they each had online training like with a coach or like they watched the program?
So there was a coach that came in and worked with them online. And then there's a, because the person was supposed to be in person, but unfortunately could not be for extenuating circumstances that they had or we had no control over. And then they'll be coming in to be able to work with our staff. And that's next week, I think. Is it done? Is it, oh, it's this week?
I'm sorry, it's tomorrow. All right.
That's good. All right, well, we'll maybe care more about that in the curriculum. With that, we can move to, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And we'll move to the minutes, the regular meeting. Any thoughts or questions, comments or queries? Would anyone like to move them? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, we move to 5.1, the treasurer's report. We'll now ask for comments or queries, thoughts. Anyone want to move them?
I'll move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And now we have 5.2, personnel items. It feels like this list gets longer every time I see it. And it goes all the way to the last item, which brings Mr. Doug Duhl potentially to serve the interim principal for the high school. Are there any thoughts or questions about the personnel items? Would anyone like to move them?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to all who are writing and including, but not limited to Mr. Duhl. With that.
I'm sorry, can I say something quick? I apologize. I just want to state that my phone was kind of blown up a little bit. The state police say Charlotte Sanna has been located and it's in good health. Ooh, there is a suspect in custody, they say. Also still in investigation, so really positive business. So, sorry to interrupt, but I thought that was important to share. What's that? Oh, that's awesome. Sorry about that.
Wishing, I need to say anything else. Okay, take a moment.
Can I say one thing, Rachel?
Of course.
I want to congratulate Frank and his team on the recommendation to bring Mr. Duhl to us as an interim principal for the high school. That was fast work. Thank you. And from what I read on his qualifications, he looks extraordinary candidate for us and we're very lucky to have him. Joined us for the year. So, thank you. Yeah, well done.
That's great to have that. I'd like to also have the opportunity to conduct that search with time. All right, well, thank you. 5.3, CSE recommendations. Are there any comments or queries? Okay, would anyone like to move it?
I'll second.
All right, there we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Substitute teacher appointments, 5.4. Any thoughts or questions?
Move it.
Would you like to move it?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have one non-resident student admission request. Questions, thoughts? Move it, anyone?
We'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and surplus and obsolete items. I feel like this should be titled the condo or the condoification of Borriesville. Any thoughts or questions? I've been looking through. No? Anyone want to move it?
I'll move them.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Out of town field trip requests. Got three amazing trips out there. Any thoughts or questions or chaperones? No? Anyone want to move it?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. With that, we move to a review of old business, the audit committee. We heard about last time, or as we met last time. Yep, has not met, should meet again, you know, not met.
Looking forward to it.
And curriculum committee, take it away.
All right, we last met just last week, September 26th. A good portion of it was the summer report, which included the number of students in attendance through CSE for any summer tutoring, students who receive specific targeted tutoring to address any learning loss. And it also included high school students who retook Regents for credit recovery. There was also a lot of work done by teachers over the summer. Summer curriculum was done for AP Spanish, Year 2, Creative Writing and Public Speaking, Sports and Society and Sports and Civics. And then there was curriculum work, and PD was done for the VES teachers for our new wonders program. Of course, the PD will be ongoing this week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. A trainer from McGraw-Hill, which is the publishing company of wonders, will be on site to observe and assist the teachers. And there was also science planning to address the updated standards. And PD was also for Unbound DEI Training, Maneuvering the Middle, which addresses math and restorative justice. We went over AP exam results. 80% of Borriesville students took at least one exam. And 59% scored a between 3 and 5 on at least one of those exams. And that's from the year 2020-21.
Is that 59% of the 80 or 59% of all students?
59% of all students.
59% of the E.
Yeah, that's all of that. Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay, just trying to trick you. Yeah.
And how many, no, just kidding.
You're asking a very wrong person.
And based off of that data, that is the highest in the area.
Yes.
That is correct.
And then we just went over class sizes, both by grade for the elementary school and then department and class-wise at middle school and high school level. And I think that covered all of it. Our next curriculum meeting is Tuesday, November 14th, 4:30 PM.
Was there a question in that meeting about the class size, like a limit, a cutoff point that we as a district wanted?
Well, just wanted to look at, see first, especially for the elementary students, is it a manageable number best for student learning and teacher manageability? And then at the high school level, we just looked the same thing to sort of balance out the classes as much as possible.
And that feels pretty comfortable.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. And the wonders person, I think there was a lot of question about that, about making sure there was enough professional development and the rollout was going to go over a couple of years. Sorry to hog the questions, but is the person who's coming, the trainer, is that someone who's taught using wonders?
Yes.
Yes, awesome. Okay. Like any new initiative or program, it's a lot of work. It's a lot, a lot of work and it will be ongoing. So hopefully the teachers are able to take full advantage out of that.
Thank you very much for that thorough review and any other questions? Or all that you're. With that, move to facilities.
Yeah, so I'll be a bit abbreviated. I do not have my minutes cheat sheet in front of me, but I do have the agenda to drive my memory. We talked a bit about openings, right, and how we did, you know, kicking off the school year. And neat protocols were top of mind because it was a brought return, especially down there at the elementary school. So what are those neat protocols are, what we're doing. Chatting about the air purifiers and HVAC stuff. Those, that's good. Quite a bit of time in the capital project. We looked at the outdoor classroom stuff and kicked around some ideas for maybe how to move forward, at least some high-level directions for, you know, I think what ended up being set up was a direction, a style that matched the building, right? So there's a few different ways that they can go with, you know, outdoor space. And there's some where very modern looking, which can look a little bit, you know, more out of place than you would think with our historic building there. So, you know, I think they're going to move into more of that historic and old school kind of style, which is neat. We also talked about facilities use. I don't remember what else we had in terms of facilities used, do you? No, it was, it was around the requests though and like stats and communication of users. Oh, we do have the new, the new online form though for the facilities request, right? Which is awesome. I'm doing a review of that on Friday, so I'll understand it better of how it's working and what the goals are and how that's.
Can I say one thing that we talked about at facilities? We did talk about the elementary school kind of murals and themes of it. So as you go into an elementary school, you know, if you notice, sometimes there's a lot of themes and there's different aspects, but sometimes there's just artwork that really doesn't make sense either, like nowadays it's like swirls or different stuff that go into it. The concept behind what we're trying to do in the elementary school is we're doing vinyl murals that are done by a graphic illustrator and artist. And she's working with groups of our students to kind of get depiction of ideas. So as you go into the elementary school, there'll be an encompassing mural that kind of covers the corner. It's calming, but it also is to kind of get you ready into what the district is about. So there'll be a blackbird and blackbirds, like real looking blackbirds, right? Intertwined, well, not the kind of the childish ones, you know, but it's going to be, it's going to look like a children's book. But it will be kind of within our scenery. So it'll be the Black Creek, it'll be, you know, we'll have the Helder Birds, it'll be purple, so it will have that idea. And then as you're walking down towards the art room, music room, and down to the community kind of play area, which is our gymatorium, there'll be artwork that will be there for our non-verbal ENL students. It'll be visual, so you'll be able to see art knowing it's art room. And then you think about K through 5, how that works. And it will have descriptions and descriptors of what it is, based off like the blackbird and they'll be engaging. So there was a picture I shared where the blackbird was engaging and braiding and swiping a flower. So that will be there and they'll be teaching components and life cycles and different textures that can be utilized. The music one will have it where the alma mater is actually part of it, so that's teacher request. And then, you know, the play, like where the gym is, we're trying to figure that out because it's a different place. But again, it's black, blackbirds going along with and having that sense of community. So it's, it's not something that's been done in other districts before. We're actually pretty excited about the ability to do this and actually kind of encompass our building into a theme, but have it also be reflective of Borriesville. So, and I shared some very early pictures of that that are on our website on the Neon Facilities Committee, because I got in trouble for sharing it, by the way. They're like, "Not yet, it's not ready." But I'm really excited about how that is going to turn out. We'll have more when we get closer to being finalized.
Yeah, that's what you really need.
And we're at the engineering stage now, right, Jim?
Yes.
We had engineering review for the transportation facility, so that's one step forward.
We have the mechanical review. They're working on an addendum for the construction. And they still haven't reviewed the overall project because that comes last.
So we're getting closer for transportation, that's positive.
Yeah. We also talked about athletic fields, getting ready for the new season. And we have some new equipment that we got, which I'm looking at a picture here and Ray tried to see it. It's a cool, much wider long mower, right? Lot more efficient, so.
So passes.
Yeah, fewer passes, fewer hours on the, on the long one. Also, the best of you, all those of you who have come in the middle school entrance, you know, will notice that over the summer that was done, which is neat. And we'll be doing something similar on the high school side next summer. Should be right for next school year.
Let's get that SED out, so we'll see.
Yes.
And the bell in the high school and middle school.
That was your idea. I want you to remember that.
That was me just saying maybe we can ring it. It's loud.
It's actually not loud any longer. It was loud two weeks ago where it was basically your ears were like bleeding. It was more.
That's great.
It's, it's.
Oh, so that was my idea.
No, so but they've, they've stopped it. It's definitely went down a lot quieter. It's only two rings. That is, that is the original bell. So the bell that is up in the, the high school lobby is the original bell that was in the Borriesville Schoolhouse in the 1800s. So, and it was sat dormant and now it's here. So it kind of gives a connection back to our school community and to our students. So they're hearing something ring to get them to classes and move on to the building that students in the 1800s heard. So if you put it in that kind of context, it's pretty cool. It was really loud and I got to be honest with you, I thought it was a horrible mistake when it wasn't happening until they changed it. But Neil did a great job getting the guy out here and having him fix it and fix the sound, so it's much more, Paige, do you agree? It's much more manageable?
Yeah, it's better. It was easier.
It would really rough for everybody involved.
It's okay now. Okay. It can't be worse than it was.
What was it, like, there's like a meme now or something about hydroglass dropping on the ground and how they just.
Got to get the boots. The boot on the hydroglass.
Do you have to moisturize me? All right, are, is it, you all set?
I am all set. That was all.
All right, thank you. Well, very exciting stuff. And with here, EBIT policy.
EBIT? Yes, we met on September 21st. And we're still trying to plug away all the NISBA recommended changes because underlying court cases and laws change. We spent a lot of time on Policy 0115, student harassment and bullying. And we're pretty close to having that done, but we still have to get through the reg that goes with it. So we'll hope to do that at the next meeting. Our next meeting is this, this Sunday, Wednesday. We have a next meeting coming up, yeah. And we started to work on Policy 0100, which is equal opportunity and non-discrimination. And it's kind of connected with Policy 0110, sexual harassment. So we'll get back at those on Wednesday and hopefully make some progress and slow bowling. It's a lot, I don't know.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. Very appreciative. There were a bunch of changes with the new NISBA change, the NISBA report of changes.
Oh, yeah. And this is a lot longer than one. Hopefully some of the future ones are cast this week.
Sometimes it's just. Well, thank you committees for all the extra effort. It's very valuable. Ready to move on to some new business. 7.1, the secret resolution. Are we ready to talk about it? Are there any questions, thoughts? Moving it, anyone want to? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That, acceptance of donations. We had a donation from PTA for the Cole Summers, Summer Writers Institute. And I'm hearing from all sorts of sources that this past. And, um, I'm hearing from all sorts of sources that this past weekend was the third anniversary of I grind, which, um, is a gym here in Borisville. And Mathias has been on ESPN with his videos multiple times. Um, had generally generously brought forth, uh, donation to the athletics. Are there any thoughts or comments on this?
It's great. Thank you so much.
Uh, anyone want to move it?
I can go.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much to the PTA and to Mathias for supporting different areas of this district. Very much appreciated. All right, with that, um, we have to apportion that money properly. This gym is here though, because that is what we do. If there are any thoughts or questions about seven point three? Um, anyone want to move it? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We move to eight point one, the opportunity for the public to be heard. Um, would anyone have anything they'd like to come forward? Okay, um, opportunity for the board to be heard. Or have anything else to mention? No. Thanks to everyone for the whole first month of school. Um, all the effort that went into it, changing and the schedule, getting darker earlier. Uh, dates to remember. I, I mentioned there's this, um, forum, budget forum, holding up the newsletter that has it, will trifle. Anyone wants this copy? Are there more copies?
Yes.
There are copies up there. Excellent. Anyone wants a copy, you can get it. That is on the nineteenth impact, six thirty, Thursday. Um, and then we have audit committee and a regular board meeting on November sixth. So they'll start here at six o'clock on the sixth. With that, uh, does anyone want to have any thoughts or questions about a journey? Does anyone want to move it?
I'll move it.
Anyone want to second that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for being here tonight.